Good evening. The October 4th special meeting of the Evanston City Council will come to order. Would the Clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Burns, Councilmember Sufferton, Councilmember Brevell.
Here.
Councilmember Reed.
Here.
Councilmember Fleming.
Here.
Councilmember Kelly.
Um.
Here. Councilmember Braithwaite.
Here.
Councilmember Nguyen.
Here.
Councilmember Nusma.
Here.
Councilmember Burns.
You.
Here.
Thank you. Eight members being present, we have a quorum and are prepared to do our work. We begin with the Mayor's public announcements, of which I have one. I'm told that all nine members of City Council, as well as myself, are signing the following apology letter regarding the events that were, that we've learned so much about regarding sexual misconduct among City of Evanston employees. I'm going to read the letter in toto. Dear current and former City of Evanston staff, parents and caregivers, and Evanston residents, thank you to all the brave community members and employees who stepped forward to share your experiences with sexual harassment while employed by the City of Evanston. We believe your statements, and we are committed to preventing the sexism, sexual harassment, assault, racism, and discrimination you experienced. We apologize for a workplace culture that allowed sexual harassment to occur, and we're sorry that you had to experience oppressive, uncomfortable, and dangerous behavior. We apologize to your families, friends, and the community of Evanston, both for the harms City staff and policies allowed to happen, and for our delay in issuing this apology. When you showed the courage to come forward, you were not treated with the prompt compassion and respect you deserved. As these incidents have come to our attention, residents understandably have lost some faith in the ability of their government officials to handle delicate and serious situations. We take responsibility for the situation, and we'll do everything in our power to right these wrongs. Moving forward, we must do better. We have begun by implementing mandatory sexual harassment training for seasonal staff, and will expand this to include participants and employees in the Mayor's Summer Youth Employment Program. We have also commissioned an independent investigation, which will help determine what actions and inactions led to this harm, so we can take additional corrective measures. We will share the outcome of this investigation while protecting the identities of those who have experienced harm. We are grateful to the organizations offering specialized resources for anyone who experienced harm, and encourage any current or former employees in need of support to reach out to the contacts below. It is our goal that the entire City of Evanston should be a welcoming environment for everyone, employees and residents alike. The city has fallen short of our expectations, and we are grateful for the courage of those of you who persisted in seeking accountability and transparency. Thank you for speaking out. The City of Evanston government must, beyond everything else, keep our community safe, and we are committed to doing just that, signed by the nine members of City Council and myself. On a personal note, I want to thank the Council for their robust engagement in this process. I want to particularly thank Councilmember Nusma, who played a very significant role in shepherding this statement through the opinions of ten very opinionated people on an enormously difficult and emotional topic. And I want to thank the various Councilmembers, particularly Councilmember Reed, who initially spurred us to take this action. And I want to be very, very, very clear that this letter is not an end, by any means, of our commitment nor of our intended action. The investigation, which is ongoing, is serious and professional, and we anticipate that we will learn a great deal from the outcome of that investigation, and we will follow that information wherever it takes us, because the stakes of this question could not be higher. Thanks, finally, and especially, as the letter indicates, to the community members who, notwithstanding the harm that was done to them, had the courage to come forward, and to the many other community members who've been a part of pushing us to take these actions. Your efforts mean enormously great deal, not only to the survivors and to those of us up here, but to everyone who lives in the community of Evanston. Thank you very much. The next item on our agenda is City Manager's public announcements.
Good evening, Mayor Biss, Clerk Mendoza, members of City Council. There's nothing to report tonight.
Thank you. Next is communications from the City Clerk.
Yes, I just, I want to acknowledge receipt of the Evanston residents who are in favor of a dog park beach at Clark's, um, dog park at Clark Square, sorry. That would be Judith M. Piper, um, Daniel A. Ladd, Felicia Baskin, Mark Levin, Ed Michael, Kristen Andrews, Marianna Desmooy, Bagshaw, Ingrid Kopik, Sarah Frost, Rachel Hayman, and Edward, Alyssa Tropin, Michael Sirnuk, Adam Goodman, and we also received one person who was not in favor of the Clark Square Dog Park, Kate Israelite, and also comments from, we received public comment from Rick Curtis concerned about the TIF and ARPA comments from Sol Anderson from the Evanston Community Foundation, and Joel Freeman concerning ARPA and CARP. I also want to make two other announcements. The Clerk's Office is happy to announce that within partnership with Administrative Services and our Chief Information Officer, we have entered into a contract with Microsystems to scan and digitize all ordinances, resolutions, rule films, and minutes in the Clerk's Office. The scanning and digitization will include all historical ordinances, records, and minutes that date back to 1863, when Evanston was founded. Records include fundamental manual indexing of titles and dates. This partnership is an example of the work departments can do together to move, here in the City of Evanston, can do together to move their information into digital platforms. I want to thank Luke Stowe, Administrative Service Director and Chief Information Officer, and Malika Sumar, Civic Technology Analyst, for providing support and guidance to help digitize records in the Clerk's Office. This work could not have been done without you. I also want to thank Melissa Parker for sharing her department, what her department has done, and for providing guidance on this project. The Clerk's Office will notify which records on its website will not be available until this project is completed. I also want to announce that I have been appointed a local registrar by the Department, the Illinois Department of Public Health, and the Clerk's Office will begin providing vital record services, death and birth certificates, beginning October 18th. The Clerk's Office looks forward to serving Evanston residents once more, and we will continue to provide this announcement to ensure it gets to as many Evanston residents as possible for the next few weeks. Thank you.
Thank you, Clerk Mendoza. The next item on our agenda is public comment. Councilmember Reed.
I'm sorry. Just to Clerk Mendoza's comments there, one, great job on getting vital records back to the City of Evanston that was removed a few years ago from the former Health Department. So it's a great service that we have back. I'm curious, with the digitization of records, I know in our office, we did quite a bit of that in the last administration. Is there a cost, or how are you achieving a? Yes.
So that's why it is a partnership between the Clerk's Office and Administrative Services and our Chief Information Officer, Luke Stowe. They will help pay for the cost of digitizing our records, and they will also help make, to make sure that the records make it onto the City of Evanston website, and that it's organized in a way where our residents can access that information.
Great, awesome. What is the cost?
The cost is $13,039, I believe if that is correct.
Thank you. All right. Good job. Thank you.
Thank you. I was also getting enthusiastic texts from my historian spouse about the value of digitization for historians. So for public comment this evening, every speaker will be given three minutes. As usual, we'll begin with the speakers who signed up in person to speak in person, who will be in order, Joel Freeman, followed by Lily Aaron, and then Andy Schlichtman. So first, Joel Freeman.
Am I allowed to remove my mask in this venue? Yeah? Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Biss, City Councilmembers, and Ms. Ganderzki. My name is Joel Freeman. Many of you have read recent emails from me and from others requesting greater ARPA funding to advance the actions towards CARP and EJ goals. Without repeating those requests, I have these thoughts for you. In late 2018, the Evanston City Council approved the resolution adopting the Climate Action Resiliency Plan, which we affectionately shortened to CARP, and the goals, quote-unquote "the goals therein." Evanston really received a lot of credit for that step, and for that, I'm grateful. I'm also grateful for the privilege of serving as co-chair of the CARP Working Group with other inspired citizens and the assistance of City staff here in Evanston. A number of working group members have continued to focus on CARP-related efforts, mine primarily through Citizens Greener Evanston. A plan such as CARP is necessary to achieve significant goals, but the words of a plan accomplish little unless real actions are taken. Here in the Midwest, instead of near the ocean, I think we've yet to be fully impressed by what doing nothing can do to our world. CARP goals require many actions, and many of those actions require funding. We have a unique opportunity here to provide some key funding, not as short-term Band-Aids, but as long-term investments in our collective future. The essence of CARP represents not a project with a beginning and an end, but an outlook that proceeds into our future in new ways, different from ways of the past, understanding we're part of something bigger and it's worth fighting for. In recent years, the unfortunate consequences of old ways have proven most unsettling, but have made our eyes see more clearly that we must better craft the real meaning of most livable for our world and in addition to our city. This outlook to the future is for the home that our kids, our grandchildren, those of all our neighbors will inherit and inhabit. Hopefully, they'll know we did our best. Please consider CARP seriously as you decide how to allocate the ARPA funding, and let's make ourselves good ancestors. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Lily Aaron.
My name is Lily Aaron, and I'm a senior at ETHS living in the sixth ward. In addition to being a full-time student, I'm on the board of Citizens Greener Evanston, and I'm the hub coordinator of E-Town Sunrise, among numerous other environmental and racial justice involvements. Additionally, I'll be attending the United Nations Climate Conference in Glasgow, Scotland, as a part of the youth climate advocacy group, It's Our Future. I spend my very limited time organizing for climate justice, as I am only 17, and would prefer if my generation, as well as fellow Evanstonians, could exist comfortably in a world that is reliably habitable. The stakes have never been higher, and the intersectionality of climate, of the climate crisis has never been more evident, as predominantly Black, Indigenous, and people of color bear the brunt of storms, fires, floods, heat waves, food apartheid, and droughts. I'm here today to demand that the City of Evanston dedicate at least $5 million of ARPA funds to CARP implementation and environmental justice. You are in a unique position to do something about it, as Evanston has already, already has a plan to both reduce our climate impacts and prepare for the inevitable heat, flooding, housing, and food shortages that will impact our most vulnerable residents. While there are immediate needs that must be met with ARPA funds, we must not be shortsighted. Not acting now will cost many more dollars and indeed lives in the long run. Listening to the experts at the Evanston Environmental Board's CARP Implementation Task Force and at Citizens Greener Evanston are prime ways of moving forward. Again, we demand no less than $5 million from ARPA to CARP implementation and environmental justice. On behalf of my generation, thank you.
The next speaker is Andy Schlichtman.
Thank you, and good evening. My name is Andrew Schlichtman. I'm a resident of the third ward, and I'm a member of Environmental Justice Evanston. One year ago, September 24th, the City Council adopted Resolution 72R20 entitled "A Resolution to Support Environmental Justice." This resolution committed the city to achieving environmental justice for all residents of Evanston, and this is an important component of the city's Climate Action and Resiliency Plan, which we often refer to as CARP. Last week, Environmental Justice Evanston sent a status report to the mayor and council members about the work that Environmental Justice Evanston has undertaken over the last year to advance environmental justice. I don't want to repeat the points that we've made in that letter. They're just two points I'd like to make tonight. First, in our view, Environmental Justice Evanston's view, the next step in this process is for the city to conduct an in-depth investigation into the nature, extent, and causes of environmental injustice in Evanston. This would include a robust public engagement program, along with face-to-face discussions with affected residents from all quarters of the city. We expect the recommendations from this investigation will serve as the basis for a citywide environmental justice mitigation plan, and we hope the City Council will support this important next step. Second, we believe the city will need to retain the services of a consultant who has experience conducting environmental justice investigations. We believe this will cost $150,000 over two years, so we are asking that this amount, the $150,000, be allocated from the ARPA funds to have this consultant to support us in the environmental justice investigation. Lastly, we look forward to your support as we work with you and the mayor, and the residents, and others in Evanston to achieve the important goals of the environmental justice resolution. Thank you very much.
Thank you. This concludes the people who signed up to speak in person, so we move to our online public comment speakers. The first will be Kim Hoopengarner, followed by Doreen Price.
Hi, thank you, Daniel. Good evening. I'm Kim Hoopengarner. I'm the Director of Advancement with Northlight Theater. I'm here to share the reasons why it makes sense for the City of Evanston to invest ARPA funds in Northlight's new theater center on Church Street. First, we bring tremendous economic development to downtown Evanston. We commissioned an independent economic study two years ago, which estimates that Northlight will generate $56 million in new spending and over $450,000 in city tax revenue over the first five years in operation. We will bring in over 50,000 people each year, people who will dine in our restaurants and shop in our stores. Second, we bring tremendous civic impact to the entire city. We engage with over 4,000 students every year, including hundreds in District 65 and 202. We also work with a number of Evanston-based social service organizations, which is incredibly unique for arts organizations. We use the fundamentals of theater to advance the missions of the Youth Job Center, Evanston Scholars, the YWCA Evanston North Shore, the Magaw YMCA, Levy Senior Center, Family Focus, YOU, and more. This list will only expand once we're physically located in downtown Evanston. And finally, we initiated a free ticket program, Arts for Everyone, three years ago. In the pilot program, we distributed over 600 tickets to individuals throughout Evanston. This season, we're on track to make available over 2,000 free tickets to the individuals reached by our community partners, demonstrating that we're committed to breaking down barriers to accessing theater, starting with the price of a ticket. Northlight in Evanston will also create over 115 full-time equivalent jobs, and we're committed to hosting a job fair for Evanstonians once we're in our new space. Our goal is to create a pipeline to a wide range of employment opportunities in the arts through our partnerships with the city, ETHS, Youth Job Center, and others. And finally, but for the support of the city, we will not be able to accelerate our timeline to build our new theater center on the property we recently purchased at 10121016 Church Street. But an investment from the city will also unlock other funding resources, including additional funds available through the state of Illinois. So in closing, I urge you to favorably consider our request, given the enormous economic and civic impact we will have, the jobs we'll create, and the positive effect this will have on our timeline in accelerating our building project. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. The next and final speaker is Doreen Price. Is, Ms. Price, are you able to hear me?
Mayor, she is online, but she is not unmuted.
I just unmuted, thank you. Sorry. Sorry. Hello?
Yep, go ahead.
Okay. So I'm in alignment with the other speakers regarding environmental justice and the other public goods that have yet to be identified and added to ARPA funds. The one exception has been in addition to behalf, in light of what others on the City Council have said, their community polling has shown up, and it has to do more money with regards to human services. I fail to understand why not, because when you look at the list of ARPA priorities, of course, it's trillions of dollars, but you see equal amounts at a higher level, like nine trillion of, obviously not all for us, but anyway, nine trillion for human services, and then also another, I don't know, nine trillion or something equivalent, something what, some equivalent for public health centers, and both are in dire need for the city, as I've mentioned, and you have to have some plan formed or some group formed, and maybe this could be an initiative from those who are most affected. I need the help, as Bobby represents and Cicely and others on the council know, in terms, from their own, own community, which is a mix of people who can help others and the others who want help but don't want to ask or are afraid to ask. So on their behalf and on behalf of the whole community, is definitely something that will help heal us, and something fully intended by the money all our taxes go for, in addition to the city's government as well, and would be a great, great fit for us. So I appreciate you listening to this and hope I can develop the ideas with more, more numbers for you. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes public comment, which brings us to special orders of business. Would anyone like to make a motion so that we can have a discussion on item SP1?
I'll move item SP1, continued discussion of ARPA funds and potential allocation.
Is there a second? Councilmember Reed moves item SP1. Councilmember Braithwaite, seconds. So we have, those of us up here, as well as the community, have access to the packet, which was designed by staff in reaction to the meeting we had two weeks ago, where council was eager to hear both some directional changes from what had been proposed prior to two weeks ago, as well as just some greater fleshing out and detail and more granularity. And I think both of those requests are reflected in the packet that we have. Another thing that's reflected is that I think council has expressed a view that rather than having presentations that mirror what's already been made public several days ago, we should just assume that folks have read the material and jump straight to a discussion. So I'm happy to turn it over. Ms. Ganderzki, my understanding is you didn't want to give a formal presentation, is that right?
That is correct. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Kelly Ganderzki, Deputy City Manager. Per council's direction, we met over several hours last week, members of the finance team and housing and grants manager, Sarah Flax, as well as economic development, Paul Zalmazak, to really kind of flesh out the parameters of ARPA. We went back to the beginning and said, what was the reason that ARPA was designed for? What was the reason this grant was given? And we really honed in on the parameters surrounding ARPA. In addition to that, we looked at where we could cross-reference other available areas of funding for some of the items we talked about, and I think that's important to note because there's an opportunity, not just to pull from ARPA on some of these categories, but to pull from other areas of funding. So I think that's really important for us to understand as well. And one of the realizations we had in this group meeting over the last week was that in certain areas of the city, in the low-mid census block groups, it almost, almost all of these categories qualify in one way or another. So CARP folds in to affordable housing, it could fold into water and sewage issues, it could fold into many other crosscategories as well. So we aren't so limited on just necessarily pigeonholing certain topics that we've discussed before into one bucket per se, but can kind of cross-reference another bucket. So I think that can be helpful when staff is collaborating with council on some of these initiatives. So I am keeping my word short tonight, and we have our team here to answer questions for council if you need, and we look forward to hearing the discussion.
Thank you very much, and with that, I'll open it up to questions from council. We'll begin with Councilmember Fleming.
Yes, thank you. So I have a couple of things. In the memo, it talks about, based on direction given from City Council, that economic development went up from 5.5 to 7 million. I'm not on economic development committee, so maybe that was, you know, it looks like they've had a couple of conversations there. But I do remember several times us saying we wanted the social services bucket to be increased, and it's now in this packet at 4 million. Was it at three before? It was at three before, so it's gone up 1 million. It just seems, and I know it's not necessarily apples to apples, but, you know, that economic development seems to be getting so much more than our social services. It just doesn't balance out of my mind, given, you know, all the work that I know social services agencies did to keep, you know, our citizens healthy and fed and everything else during the pandemic. My other comment here is in the social service bucket, I know I made the recommendation for $700,000 for guaranteed income, but I'm not sure why that was coming out of social services instead of out of inclusive and equitable recovery. It seems like, you know, the way we're trying to design that program is to help those people who going into the pandemic needed the most support in terms of cash assistance, so it seems like that's more of a recovery item to me, and not a social service item, I guess in my mind. The other comment that I had was about hazard pay, so I'm glad to see it's on here. I don't know when we're supposed to get, long ago, I had asked for information about who qualifies and what we think those costs would be, and that hasn't been provided yet that I've seen, so I'm a little bit concerned that we've already put a dollar number on hazard pay for our staff, unless there's been some kind of analysis done to let us know that's kind of where they cap out, because I know, especially during the food pantry, I work with a lot of staff, you know, this is before we had N95 mask and all that stuff, very close proximity to each other and to the citizens to provide a need for them, and those staff were not, you know, given any kind of hazard pay that I, that I know of. And then my only other comment, and I'll turn it over, is the fee, let me see, sorry, it was on here for like, I know we talked about the, so there was the equipment replacement for last year, then there's also more equipment spending for this year, and then there was additional operational requests, and so I really would like, and I appreciate that this document does go further than last time, but, you know, I know this, this money was for kind of revenue loss and to replace things, but, you know, I am concerned when we have so much money going through these operational requests, although I don't know what they are, versus again, something that's going towards the citizen base. City Manager Storley talked about other funds that were available for social service agencies that she was going to have, I think, a staff be available to help nonprofits or social service agencies to assess, and I don't know that that ever came to fruition, but I think it's worth us kind of just thinking really long and hard about, I mean, if we were going to another pandemic, those are the people who are going to, you know, really step up and help our services. and help our services or help our citizens much more than our economic development department or services would.
Did you or anyone else want to answer any of those questions?
Sure, I can address some of that in part. Again, while we're allocating, we're proposing to allocate around 4 million of social services, what we discovered in hashing this out over the past week or so is that some of this cross-references into other categories of funding. So in the very last page, Ms. Flax put together a handout showing what other forms of assistance are available for certain social services. So that's one area of additional funding that's available. But secondly, it's, and it's kind of difficult to explain on paper in some ways, but some of these areas cross-reference. So inclusive and equitable recovery could also work into the social services category. So we can take some from there, and depending upon what the allocation is for, or we could do it for water and sewer infrastructure needs, depending upon the area of the city as well. So it, this is just giving us a jumping off point, I would say, for where we can kind of keep ARPA budgeted, but by no means is this like exclusive. So we can say that, you know, if someone were to bring us an item for social services that also references affordable housing, we can cross-reference into the other buckets.
Just for clarification, are there other funding allocations that are available for business communities? I mean, I'm just asking that, because I remember when the CARES Act came, it seemed like there was tons of money for businesses, but at least from my understanding, and I wasn't in the space, nonprofits didn't feel like money was flowing that fast to them.
Manager Zalmazak, do you want to speak to that?
Good evening, members of the city council. Clerk Mendoza. Certainly, the current, I guess, status of federal money, it's pretty limited for businesses today. I mean, one of the reasons is because there's an ARPA program out there to invest in business recovery.
Okay, thank you. And do you have any idea when we, when the assessment on hazard pay would be done?
So the 500,000 was my best estimate, given on the number of staff that we have and who may qualify. Directors are still cross-referencing their lists with HR, and there's parameters on who can actually qualify under ARPA. So ARPA is very strict about who, you know, salary requirements and who's qualified. So that's going to take a little time to flesh out, but we've begun to work on that.
All right, thank you.
Next will be councilmember Kelly, followed by Newsma.
Yeah, I'd also like to speak to the hazard pay. I feel like that number is low. Just looking, for example, and I think this should be addressed, the fire department. I know they made serious concessions, two years of concessions, I believe, at 2.25% raise. They gave up for two years, and I think this amounts to anywhere to $6,000 to $7,000 that they offered up in goodwill, seeing that the city was going to be facing, you know, multimillion-dollar deficit. And I think, I mean, we all know that they, they had to reinvent the way they operated, both in the streets and in the firehouse, constantly taking severe precautions. Many of them were forced to stay in hotels for weeks in order not to bring home the virus and, I mean, just incredible duress. And I just think it's, it's, you know, we really need to recognize what they went through and the sacrifice that they did make to give back those, what had already been previously negotiated in that series. The union had already previously negotiated two years of raise, and they gave that up. And so I think at this point, we really need to honor those frontline workers and the work they did, and acknowledge that they came to the table in goodwill and gave back that money. I think now that we're in a different economic situation, we should consider refunding or bringing, you know, making, making those previously negotiated contracts whole for 20 years, '21 and '22. So I think that would push that number, make that number considerably larger.
Next is councilmember Newsma, followed by Reed.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just to clarify our rules of engagement for this evening, are we, how are we limiting our time to, so we can conduct an efficient conversation here?
Great question. And by the way, you didn't ask this question, but I'll answer it. So the intent is not to vote on anything tonight. The intent is to react to this packet, to give staff direction, and perhaps come back with something we could vote on it the next time we discuss this. We have one agenda and one agenda item only, and it's super important. So what I've been doing is I've been operating under the ordinary rules in terms of my timekeeping. No one has run out of time yet, and I was planning on being more loose with time limitations than I ordinarily am. But obviously, the rules allow any of you to impose our time limits if you feel like things go on for too long.
Thank you. I will try and keep it tight right now, but, you know, reserve the right to jump back into this discussion a little bit later this evening. I have a question or two and some concerns. Before I get to those, I just want to express my personal philosophy when it comes to our approach to spending this ARPA money. And one from a strategic level, I think we're on the right track now, you know, defining at a, at a high-level perspective, how we want to spend this money. Defining the definitions of these buckets is important, and then how much money we are putting into each bucket is important. So we're on the right track tonight. I think this underscores the fact that this would be an easier conversation, and we'd already be further along if we had a strategic plan. So as a side note, I'm really happy that we have that process and that that process is unfolding, but we don't want to wait for that to wrap up before we continue this discussion. So we're on the right track here. And then how do we want to spend this money? I do think the first thing we want to do is catch up with city finances. That's kind of the main priority, you know, one of the main reasons that ARPA exists in the first place, is to dig us out of the hole and, you know, bring us hopefully back up to par where we would have been otherwise with, with city budget expenses. And that, you know, without going overboard, you know, we could easily spend all this money on city stuff and not make any real impact in the community, you know, other than, you know, on the city's, you know, financial statement. And we don't want to do that. We do want to take advantage of this opportunity to really make some impactful and bold investments in projects in our community. And I'm inclined to do a fewer number of smaller projects rather than piecemeal out the money a dollar at a time, and we would, you know, kind of lose track of where it goes, not from a record-keeping perspective, but from a, you know, historical opportunity perspective. I'd like to be able to turn around in 10 years and point to something and say, ARPA money got us that, and use this opportunity to make an investment that we might not otherwise be able to. And so I think that certainly includes a strong consideration to making some investments in our CARP commitments. So I want to acknowledge the good work of our friends in the environmental sustainability and the environmental justice community for sharing with us their vision of a five-year plan on how we could easily spend $5 million on CARP and environmental justice. And I think whether or not we ultimately take ARPA money to spend on CARP, I think that sets a good, you know, roadmap for us to consider moving forward, not only in the budget process for 2022, but following years as well. And that brings me to a question regarding the timeline on by when do we have to spend this money? And what are, you know, what are the very, you know, to the extent that we need to know in order to make some decisions, what are the guidelines on when we need to spend this or when we need to incur those costs? So that's a question for acting city manager or the chief financial officer.
Yeah, I'm going to call upon our CFO, Hitesh Desai, to explain.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the city council. So as far as the, what do you call the guidance we have, they have only expressly mentioned that these funds should be obligated by '24 and be spent by '26 for water, sewer, and broadband infrastructure. They haven't said this, used the same language for the routine thing. At the same time, they have mentioned that you have four years for the revenue loss, '20, '21, '22, and '23 to be used a year after that. That means '21 to '24. So at this point, I would recommend on the safer side that we just plan it and consider it for the capital expenditure of the infrastructure projects, considering their lengthy time to implement the project and not plan anything beyond '24 for the operational needs.
So let me just repeat back to make sure I understood. If it's infrastructure, we can obligate it by '24, but we don't have to spend it for another couple of years.
Two years, right. And the obligation, I mean, and I would just clarify, as far as even the language we have, is not just that city council says, okay, we will spend $5 million for water projects, and it's not obligated. Do we have a project ongoing? We have the process done, you know? So that would be considered an obligation, kind of in true sense. They're just giving two years because they know it's an infrastructure project, which takes sometimes more than one year to implement.
Right, so anything other than infrastructure, we need to spend that money by the end of 2024?
That's what I would consider right now, based on the guidance we have.
Okay. So if we're talking five-year plan, that would apply for a capital expense, a capital project, but, but not for environmental justice or social services or economic development?
And even for capital, I would say it is only four years, because you have to kind of take a concrete action that, okay, we will give X dollars to water sewer project. We would have the process done. We would have done the, like, contract awarded, and then we say, yes, the project is only done 20%, we have to have the bills out, and then the money goes out in '25 or '26.
Mm-hmm. Okay, thank you. And just one final comment for right now. I do think the, we're trending in the right direction with how these buckets are being allocated. I think they're closer to, you know, the feedback that I've gotten from the community. I do want to make sure that, you know, when it comes to the CARP funding, we are, we are somehow internally obligating ourselves to that. And Assistant City Manager Ganderzki, you're saying it's kind of hard to define or to set aside a bucket that says CARP?
We cannot. So that's what we've discovered. We can, CARP in and of itself is not an ARPA category. It's not, it's not going to be something that the government's going to allow. But if we implement CARP into other allowable buckets, like affordable housing or clean drinking water, or one of the other inclusive or equitable recovery, we can definitely implement CARP into those buckets.
So there's ways we can accomplish CARP goals by working within one of these other categories. The proposal that was in front of us a month or so ago, to put a million into CARP, what, what happened to that? Is that still viable, or is that, is that morphed?
So I would say yes. If you, I would consider the million dollars that was staff previously recommended to be split up amongst these other buckets, however which way council decides to spend it. But I think this, this categorization better represents, one, a better definition of what we can do, but two, a safer structure for everyone to follow for the guidelines.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Next is councilmember Reed, followed by Braithwaite.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was unfortunately absent at the last meeting where this was the brunt of the discussion. But so I'll just echo some of my beliefs in agreement with some of the folks who spoke before me. City finances, I think, is important. Economic development, when it comes to economic development, I think we have to be primarily focused on public works. That's for economic development and not as much giving money to private businesses to accelerate their projects or whatever the case may be. CARP, I think, is extremely important. And I do think, you know, I appreciate Deputy Manager Ganderzki's summation there, but I do think we could create a bucket that was CARP. Obviously, we can create our own buckets. Obviously, the expenditures would have to meet the ARPA guidelines, but if we want to set money aside to help us reach our own climate action resiliency goals, I certainly think it makes sense to set aside a bucket of money that is specifically for that, even if it does, you know, address, you know, other issues. And so I think we can achieve that. I do have a question. So with the, in regards to our lost revenue, Hitesh, you did say that it, that we have until 2024, the lost revenue, to allocate. Okay, that's the only clarity I want. Thank you.
I can offer a further explanation on that if you need.
Sure, sure, go ahead.
Ms. Lewis Laken is here, and she's, we're going to be pretty soon having our budget presentations, but as she's whittling down those numbers, we were able to further hone in on, because this is going to follow, one's going to follow the other, right? So with the budget projections coming out, we have a better idea what the lost revenue is going to be, as well as the other city expenditures. I think I forgot to address this for councilmember Fleming. What we've realized is how short-staffed we are and understaffed we've been and what's been cut throughout the years. And so some of this extra spending is to provide city services at a level that the city of Evanston expects us to provide services. And to do that, part of that is spending money, and part of that also is bringing some of the city's current infrastructure that we use up to speed to get, to get the jobs done, so to speak, while other revenues have been cut. But if, for further detail on that, not to belabor the point, Ms. Lewis Laken can outline what we're looking at for next year.
Good evening, members of council. Mayor Beth, we just have a couple of quick slides that show this, in case we wanted to look at the detail on these items. So this slide references the 2.5 million that is discussed in the memo regarding sort of the deficit for 2022 that we're starting with in the general fund. Much more detail on all of these numbers will come out in the budget document as we're finalizing that this week. That'll be, again, released next Monday. As we look at that 2.5 million net deficit, the proposal is to use 1 million in fund balance from our general fund and another 1.5 million in ARPA to cover that. And then these additional requests that are listed here, that 5 million and then the additional 300,000 below in additional operations requests, this is sort of a approximation of the kinds of requests and the bulk of requests that we have received from our departments for additional software, staffing, and other programmatic improvements to really improve the services we're providing to the city. That list, again, is getting specified and refined and really finalized this week, and that'll come forward next week with the budget as well. So those are the numbers that we're talking about when we start looking at what, what's going to be built into the 2022 budget, and we'll have further discussion on that as well.
And I'll just add, a portion of the operational requests that we're asking for may also be revenue raising, so that's just something to keep in mind.
Councilmember Reed, were you done?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I think councilmember Fleming had a follow-up question to that slide, is that correct?
Yeah, I just had a question for Kate. So when you, and maybe you said this is coming later, but the 5 million, you said that includes bringing back or filling some vacant positions that we've had. I know we had a ton. Is that correct?
It does. So there's a, there's a, filling positions is in a couple of spots. So first of all, our baseline general fund of, that we're showing in the $115 million range, that includes the positions that last year were held vacant specifically for one year, bringing those back in the baseline. So that number of positions, which is in the 25 positions number, I believe, that's all included sort of in this first, when we talk about the baseline general fund deficit. The additional 5 million includes, I believe, about 22 positions requested by the departments beyond those that were just held vacant last year. Many of these were-
Which, let me interrupt for one second, which the council will receive very detailed memos on.
No, but my question, let me get to my question before you go through the whole thing. So if we put these positions back, which I'm not giving an opinion on, how do we, or I guess, in your memo or in a budget memo, you would tell us how we're going to, with this one-time fund, put these monies back, but make sure that we don't lay the staff off in two years if we're out of money again. So that's for another time, but that is a question I have for when we get to that part of the budget.
Yep, and I think that is a fair consideration. Yep, and I think that is a fair consideration, that again, of the number of requests you will be given, some of them are one-time expenses, some of them will be ongoing, you know, bringing on a staff member, and we'd have to consider the long-term implications
Next will be Councilmember Braithwaite, followed by Revel, followed by Burns.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. To our city staff, I'm going to echo some of the things that I've heard from our peers. I think with this one-time fund, it's vital that we do our best to shore up our city finances, particularly the areas that we've seen lost revenues. I also think economic development is a key component as well. And for everyone that has spoken the last three, four months about holding our tax line, I think the wonderful thing about economic development represents two things. So first of all, we definitely have a need to replace the businesses that have been lost, particularly in our downtown area. We all focus on that term, ROI and return on our investment, so I think we target those businesses that we know are going to have an immediate impact to either stabilizing our tax base or replacing income that we've lost through our retail tax base. The other thing that I really firmly believe in is through economic development that we're also focusing on job creation. I have a very deep heart for our social service resources that we have in town, but with that, I also have a philosophy that you can either give me a fish or teach me to, or teach me how to fish. And I think in this day and age, teaching me and others who look like me, I want to teach people how to fish and make sure that we are giving them the resources to be successful. And through economic development and other resources, I hope that we pay attention, Paul, to those jobs, those opportunities that are going to do those things. So again, tax base, also the retail tax, as well as job creation should be priorities. I think we have the necessary tools that we've used over the years that have been very successful, and it's just a matter of funding those and finding the right business opportunities. I also think we need to target infrastructure. Over the years, we create that and we go out to bond based on projects that we know that we have to do. And I know that we've, through Kelly and our staff, our former city manager, we've identified infrastructure as a basic need, and I think that that's something that we also need to pay very close attention to. So I'm looking forward to, when we go through that budget process, that those projects that we're funding through the ARPA funds, that people see it and understand it to the best of your ability to instruct. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speakers will be Councilmembers Revel, followed by Burns, and then Wen. And just wanted to flag that I'm tracking everybody, so there's several other people who have already spoken, have asked to speak again, will be called on to speak again, but I'm going to go through everyone for a first time first. So again, Revel, followed by Burns, followed by Wen.
Well, I support my colleagues' comments about the importance of the, making up the lost revenue, and certainly economic development is a really important investment to strengthen our city's position going forward. And I do understand how CARP is now being shown as being part of affordable housing and water and sewer infrastructure and inclusive and equitable recovery. But I have to say, in the previous iteration where CARP was, you know, highlighted on its own with a million-dollar line item, that was reassuring to me because it did say upfront that we were definitely going to be spending that money on CARP implementation, in my mind. So I guess I have just one question. Can ARPA funds be used for, for example, staff to develop, implement, CARP implementation plans, or any of those kinds of things? Or is that something that we need to ask our staff to be sure to include in our 2022
Sarah Flax, Housing and Rent Manager. It's complicated. They don't make it simple by giving us the categories we want. I think there is justification, in some cases, for staff to be able to implement programs, there is, programs that tie into CARP. So it kind of depends on how you frame it, and if you expect the entire cost to be picked up by CARP, I mean, by ARPA alone. It's clear that we can have staff to implement the different programs and services and projects that are funded by ARPA. But I think that we would get looked at kind of like, what the heck is CARP if we put in a CARP administrator or something? So I think it's how you frame it. Much of this is how all of this is. You know, they say, you can, anything that you can argue is improving public health. For example, affordable housing, by improving quality of housing, which for a lower-income residence has created health inequities, is a great example of something that I really think we should be looking at doing. But it doesn't get labeled as CARP. I mean, I'm just trying to give examples. Does that help?
Yeah, that's about the answer that I expected. But I do think, the more we think about trying to make real serious progress on CARP and our really ambitious goals, having an actual game plan, implementation game plan in general would be really, really wonderful to have. But I do appreciate that, sure, I mean, you know, rehab, funding to do energy efficiency rehabs for affordable housing could be really, really important, and green infrastructure projects for under our water and sewer infrastructure, and a number of things under inclusive and equitable recovery. I mean, because I see that's a really important place to get some, make some headway with environmental justice. I think we could even do, you know, we could do CARP under economic development because some of our businesses could certainly do with energy efficiency upgrades to their buildings to reduce their utility costs, or, well, and our, you know, our daycare facilities could, you know, there are all kinds of ways we could be doing a lot with weatherization and energy efficiency to, to help in a number of places.
And almost anything-
And then, and one little, oh, go ahead, Sarah.
Almost anything we do in our qualified census tract would, could also qualify as CARP. I mean, much of what we're trying to improve the built environment, the physical environment that's been under-invested would very much tie into CARP and environmental justice as well, which I think is critical.
And then, just not to neglect any one of our buckets here, that could really all relate to CARP at some point. And our revenue loss funding, when we've got all this money we're talking about for equipment replacement, put in a plug for making sure we really look hard at getting electric vehicles, and we need electric landscape maintenance equipment in order to keep up with the changes we're going to be making in our leaf blower policy. So there's, if we can just have a big CARP mantra everywhere we look, that would be very helpful. Thanks.
Thank you. Next is Councilmember Burns, followed by Wen.
Yeah, so one, participatory budgeting feels like something that we should be able to take some action on now. I think I remember an email, and I volunteered to do something a while ago. I think it was to work through developing PB in some way. So what was that? I'm sorry, I don't know what I signed up for, but I know I volunteered to move that forward.
Great point, Councilmember. I was, this has been an awkward point that I haven't mentioned, because I sent an email to all of council saying, hey, it looks like we're heading in the direction of doing this participatory budgeting thing. We're going to figure out a mechanism to do it. Who wants to be a part of a, some kind of working group or subcommittee to do that? And then only one person signed up, so they didn't know what to do with the subcommittee of one, Councilmember. But that's what you signed up for, and I appreciate it, and I can maybe send up a follow-up email. You know, we've had, we've had outreach from folks who are interested in partnering with us in this, who have really exciting ideas, interested in doing it pro bono as well. And so I just think there's a lot of, a lot to dig into, and, you know, this would be the biggest waste of money in the world if we do it poorly. But it's really an exciting thing if we do it right.
And Councilmember Reed just volunteered, so there's two of us coming out of this meeting, Councilmember Newsman, three, so there we go. And just so the community understands, again, PB is something that the community, it's a process that the community would drive, that the community is actually the ones through a general assembly who are coming up with proposals to fund. And so that's a process we wouldn't have much involvement in, and so I think it's something that we can take action on while we, you know, take our time and think through every, all the other funding allocations. That's something that, in my opinion, we can really drive for right now. And it'll be a useful process, just to hear from the community, see what projects get funded, that can also help guide some of our decisions. All right, next step. I also have the question, can we hire additional staff for our sustainability office? So that was answered, so thank you for bringing that up, Councilmember Revel. I also think something that we need to figure out is like, how much staff do we need, new positions do we need to create with ARPA funds? Like, that's really important. Because what I'm looking for is projects to fund, right? Like, it's helpful to play around with the numbers in this way and say, okay, we're going to put, you know, one meeting, we're putting five in economic development, and the next meeting, we're putting seven. I mean, that's, that's great. But ultimately, like, we have to identify projects to fund. And for my colleagues up here who received the email from some of our environmental advocates around CARP implementation, to me, that was a really good example of a project that we can fund, where they've budgeted out what they believe is going to take to implement a plan that we've already invested in over the next five years. And so then we can take a look and say, okay, well, what is the cost to hire staff and move this forward? And to me, that's the first thing so far that I've seen that's like really clear. Like, it has a plan behind it, it has kind of a proposed budget over the next five years, they laid out exactly, you know, the staff and everything that we need, we'll need to go into it. And I think that's the level of detail that we need for all these categories. Again, we've been, this is now maybe the third or fourth meeting where we're like, yeah, economic development is a great thing to do. Of course it's a great thing to do, but what's the project we're going to fund? For example, and I'll be the first to start offering some ideas, but, and I know others have as well, I don't want to take away from that, but we got to start, like, let's put stuff on the table. So our lead pipe replacement, workforce development training, as you've heard me talk about at every meeting, Director Stoneback is working on a plan that would allow the city to be the one training our, at least in part, would be training our workforce to go out and replace our lead pipes, as opposed to contracting it out and sending everything through, through a union that trains. And I want to be careful there, because even the way that I'm proposing we do it, there still would be a union. It's ASME. They currently represent our workers in the Water Department. But again, this would allow, give us the opportunity to really control how many City of Evanston workers are trained and that are able to get some of this work. So again, that's something that if we can play that all out, we'll know exactly what the costs are. Again, Director Stoneback is coming back with those details, and then we can figure out how it fits in the funding. But I think we need to get to the point where we're determining projects, and if we don't have the staff currently to help us determine what those projects are, then one of the first steps is to figure out, like, what additional staff do we want to bring on? Because that's what I would like to see personally, and I don't know if by hiring the 20 or so additional staff that we held over would do it, where will staff will say, yes, I think we have what it takes to do all these plans, develop all these projects in-house. But I would really like to know that. And then, I know I'm probably over five, but just a quick, what, I'm not, oh, okay. Station is clear from the goals. Also wanted, Sarah, to provide, just a quick definition of the, or where the QCT areas are. The last time this came before us, it was at 6 million, now it's 4 million. Again, as far as I understand, we have one QCT census tract in Evanston, I could be wrong, but that was my understanding, is 8092, it's in the 5th Ward. Folks have said, and especially with the conversation with TIF, but funding in general is like, oh, why don't y'all go after ARPA money instead of TIF? Well, again, just now, there's a QCT area in the 5th Ward, and we've gone from 6 million now that could be allocated to this particular census tract in the 5th Ward, now to 4. So could you provide just a quick idea of what QCT is, how many QCT areas we have? And then the final question is, how much are we going to set aside all of this 4 million specifically for projects in 8092? Thank you.
I can certainly tell you where the QCTs are. I don't think I can say exactly how much will be set aside.
With a recommendation?
I'm just joking. 8092, there's a map in your packet, is, comprises four census block groups, and it runs pretty much from the triangle where Green Bay Road and the canal meet, down the canal to Church Street, then across to Ashland, no, Ashland or so, and then it goes up to Emerson. So that is the census tract that was one of our NSP-2 census tracts. Technically, Census Tract 8093, which is that chunk that's east of the Green Bay Road, is also considered a qualified census tract. That shows up as a qualified census tract because there are a lot of students who count as low-income. I don't really think it addresses our goals of investing in that area. The only time we take advantage of that is when, if we have something like a housing development in there that can qualify for low-income housing tax credits better, because it's a QCT. But I don't think that's an area where we want to sink a lot of money into. I would like to look at whether or not we can qualify part of Census Tract 8092, which is the other NSP-2 census tract, which is the very south part of Evanston, the southeast section. There are four census block groups that are west of the train tracks, south of Oakton, and run over to Ridge Avenue. And that is another one of our economically underserved areas and much lower income. The entire census tract doesn't qualify because the other two block groups are much more affluent. But the guidance says you can define other areas as long as you can make a case for that. So that is something I would like to see if we can do, because that is an area where we have a lot of very low-income people settled. We had a lot of our immigrants that were resettled, and people really are different cultures, and all sorts of people of great, really high need down in that area, that I really want to see if we can qualify it. Now, Treasury hasn't told us what we do to qualify something, so we'll have to see if we can write it up and say, hey, will you approve this? There's no real guidance on how detailed you have to get in that process. So those two areas are the areas that I see as our focus for our geographic focus, because those two areas have been economically lagging the rest of the city for really quite a while. And, you know, the 8092 almost completely matches up with the redlined area, too. So it's just, you can see the long-term impact of that sort of thing.
I just would like a recommendation as to how many funds is staff recommending that we use in those two QCT areas? Because what I don't want to happen is, it feels like we're getting the funding because of these areas to disperse and use elsewhere. Like, I really want the focus to be in these areas if that was the original intent of this particular allowance, you know, from the ARPA guidelines.
One of the things I think is really, we have to look at our, what capital projects we would do in there. I think it's really difficult to just pick a number. I think we have to get a little bit more down to what the projects are. There are some things I think we might want to consider. We have buildings like the Family Focus Building in that census tract that needs a whole lot of work and could be a social services hub or something like that. I mean, we haven't, we heard at our town hall meetings, we had people stand up and speak, please invest in that. That could be another way of investing in the community. I see huge opportunities for affordable housing in both of those areas. I see huge opportunities for affordable housing in both of those areas. But I also hope that we don't have to use only ARPA. I'm hoping we can layer in a lot of other funding. We don't know exactly what will come out of the $1 trillion infrastructure plan or the $3.5 trillion Build Back Better Plan. I don't think they'll go through at exactly those levels, but I certainly hope they do go through. I want to give you an example. Now, in ARPA, they issued $5 billion through the home program. And of that $5 billion, we are getting 1.28 million roughly, right? Usually, our home allocation is about $350,000 a year. So that's pretty substantial. What the House has put into the $3.5 trillion Build Back Better for home is $34 billion. If we were to get the same proportion, which is one of the reasons it's so hard to say, oh, do exactly this at this point. And one of the things that's in ARPA is it says, don't, that one of the reasons they are issuing money in two tranches, as they call it, is we don't know everything we have to do. And we have to be able to respond to changes, both in the pandemic and also in funding opportunities. So I think we really have to, we want to sort of make buckets, but I think we have to be open to being flexible about them and not lock ourselves into them. Because I think we could really, really benefit from looking at all this kind of money. There's also tons of money in, for lead service line replacement. That's one of the goals of one of the other bills. So how do you commit money right now? And then you might find out that, oh, boy, guess what? There's a whole nother, you know? It's another thing that just makes it really complicated.
My comment was more so about, I've heard people say, oh, yeah, we can tap into the inclusive and equitable money for other projects. And I just want to be clear that I would like to know that that isn't happening regularly and that we are spending the money in the QCT areas. Now, within that, again, we can fund many different projects, but I just want to be clear. We either saying we're going to spend a million of that money outside of the QCT area or we're going to spend all of it in. Those are the type of, that's the question.
And that's why this is as clear as mud in some ways. But that's why we need a jumping off point because, and I guess council can look at it this way. This is in part, you know, the start, the mission. Could the mission change in a couple of months? If we find out we're getting part of that $1 trillion infrastructure bill, then, yeah, we won't need to use, you know, any of this money for water and sewer replacement because we'll have it in the infrastructure bill. We can reallocate this money somewhere else. But to me, from a management perspective, and this is just what I need and my staff needs, is something allocated so we can keep track of the tabs. And you, as the council, will hold us accountable to say, okay, yes, you're bringing forth a resolution or you're bringing forth a project, but that's not in the census block that I think it should go into. That's not part of what we think this money should be used for. And we're here, I mean, we've been doing a lot of listening all summer to the community members, roundtables, town halls, committee meetings. Paul's brought forth some ideas from the Economic Development Committee. And in some ways, everyone wants to know, well, you know, what do we need to spend? We can give estimates, but if we get other funding from other sources, you know, we want to be open and honest with the community and say, you know, we're using this money as responsibly as possible because it's a one-time thing.
And Mayor Bis, real quick, if you need a vote on that, you know, I'm happy to motion for that. But again, I just want to be really clear. My expectation is we spend this money in QCT areas, and I'm happy to make a motion if we need to solidify that tonight or a follow-up meeting.
Well, I would, I mean, as we discussed at rules, I would respectfully suggest that we not take votes tonight. I mean, that's something that we can put on the next agenda and discuss. But I think your point of view was expressed super clearly, and I'm sure that message was received. Councilmember Winn, can you hear me?
Sorry about that.
Great.
Can you hear me now?
Sure can, go ahead.
Okay, thank you. This has been a really valuable discussion. I'm very glad I'm joining it. And I agree with many of the points that my fellow council members have made, particularly Newsma Braithwaite on revenue loss issues and some of the really important points that Councilmember Burns is just making about projects. When I look at this, I am looking at this ARPA money sort of operating in two parallel tracks. I think the first part is that we must address the revenue loss from last year. You know, we waited and rated and hoped as each of the iterations of the CARES Act were passed by Congress. But what happened was cities above 500,000 were given aid. And there was a bill for cities below 500,000 that we were hanging our hopes on, every city in the United States below 500,000 we're hanging our hopes on, that never passed. And so as a result, our budget process last year was very painful and very difficult. And we had to make a number of serious cuts. And so now, we, now finally, that bill was passed that helped cities below 500,000. And it's really important that we fill that hole that unfortunately was created by COVID. And may still be being created by COVID because, as I've said before, when people start talking about during the pandemic, you know, I think we're not done with the pandemic, as we all know. So I, so one track I see is really critically addressing our revenue loss. And the federal government sent that this money finally to us to help with that. And then the other track is looking at all of these buckets, which I appreciate and I understand how they're divided up. But as the staff has said and a number of us have sort of talked about, you know, a dollar spent on economic development is, can also be seen as a dollar spent for CARP, which is also, if it's workforce development, is also a dollar for social services. And if it's spent in, for workforce development in that census tract, there's another, that counts there too. So I, when I'm looking at all of this, I look at this almost as a matrix in terms of the different ways that every dollar counts for things. You know, some dollars will be simply, might only fit in one bucket. But I think most of these dollars will fit in multiple buckets. And when I'm analyzing this, I'm trying to understand which of these checks the most boxes for us in that mental matrix that I have that addresses as many different needs that we have with each dollar so that each dollar has a greater impact. So when, you know, every time I read the materials from the staff and I appreciate them more and more, I annotate them by saying, give me an example. Where's an example? Well, how much does this project cost? What could we do for this? So I think that's, sort of goes to the point that Councilmember Burns was making of we need more detail to understand how to weigh which direction we're going in. Generally, I think we're going in the right direction. Now, what I'd like to get more understanding of, what are the programs that are possible and what do they cost? And so that's the next step in my mind to understand. I also strongly support the, that we, the CARP issues that we've been discussing, that we layer or lace CARP into everything to the greatest extent possible and make sure that, I mean, that is an investment in our future that we need to do. So with those comments, Mayor, I want to compliment the staff on this memo. It's very helpful, and I'm looking forward to more detail and more detail. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes the first round for everybody. So thanks to all for your comments and participation in what's obviously a critical conversation. Requesting to speak a second time are councilmembers Kelly and Reed.
I'm no longer requesting a second time.
Requesting to speak a second time are councilmembers Kelly, Revel, and Fleming.
First, I feel like we should obviously proceed in an organized way for the public, so maybe commit to a certain number of meetings right now, even though that might morph, you know, as we go on. But I think it would be good this evening if we committed, say, to a series of three of these meetings, just as sort of a pointing, a starting point. I think that's important so that we can also, as we're going forward, you know, narrow it down and have goals for maybe a third or final meeting where we would narrow in on particular programs and as such. Then, Kate, I just had a question on the additional operational requests, the 5 million under revenue loss funding category. So that does not actually reflect revenue loss? Is that correct, the 5 million?
Anything that we propose under the revenue loss sort of funding category would have to fall under the amount that we can claim and show it was revenue lost by the city. So I made a note that we should, you know, provide a memo with those numbers more specifically at the next version of this discussion. But this full 13 million that we're showing tonight, we know that we can claim as revenue loss to the federal government. So that's a portion of the number, and it could be higher as well.
Okay, but that, the 5 million, though, that's in, those would be newly created positions?
That's what some of the requests are. There are many other things as well. So the detail on that will be available next week.
Okay, great, thank you. And then I also feel like our, the amount that we're, that is suggested to be allocated for social services feels to me exceedingly low given the devastating impact of the pandemic and our city, the demographics, the economics of our city, the low-income population. And I'd like to see that along with the hazard pay. I feel that those numbers should both be increased. And I'm not sure exactly where at this point, where, how that would be shifted around. But I do think it's important that those numbers be greater in order to really serve our residents as we recover from the devastation of the pandemic. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Revel, followed by Fleming, followed by Newsma.
Well, we've heard in person this evening from a number of our residents about CARP implementation. I just want to highlight, we also, at about 5 o'clock, received an email from Saul Anderson at the Community Foundation encouraging us to continue to have a robust community engagement in, as we move forward making these decisions. And so I just, I was wondering whether staff has had any, given any thought to how that might proceed? And then also, I'm wondering whether Councilmember Burns would see this as being also part of the participatory budgeting component.
Yeah, we've already had a series of several roundtables and town hall meetings, and we are going to continue to meet with the community. We are going to do another Spanish town hall for the budget, for a budget presentation. We're planning that. These, again, to me, this is like the beginning of the series of conversations. We've, as Mayor Bis expressed, there's been several members of the community that have come forth to ask about participatory budgeting and offer services and engagements. There's going to be a lot more engagement opportunity. And, you know, with the roundtables that have existed already and the town halls, I know several members of the council have participated in those and continue to talk in their ward meetings with our partners and local interest groups. So we, you know, all of that should be part of this. And we're looking very much forward to a report by the Evanston Community Foundation on their findings from these community meetings because I think that's going to be extremely important for the council to consider as well.
Right, but I think the message from Saul Anderson was that the community is looking forward to continuing to have these opportunities for input and engagement. And so, you know, we know we've received the draft report of the bulk of the roundtables and that were held, but they're, the community is looking for additional opportunities beyond, you know, going forward.
Yeah, if I could react, if I could react to that. So my mind goes two different places here. First of all, you know, I think we are kind of, sorry, I draw a tree like a mathematician from the roots down, which is a weird thing we do. Anyway, I think of this as a, there's a decision tree, right? Where we're talking now, and definitely not finalizing tonight, but talking now about kind of the categories and the allocations to the categories, which is maybe the most important question and also maybe the easiest, right? Compare that to, you know, how to actually allocate the social services category, for instance. That'll be at least as difficult. And so I think that the engagement process that was kind of overseen by the Community Foundation and the report that, you know, I think the final report will be forthcoming in a matter of days, is really useful to help us think through kind of the high-level allocation. And I think continued engagement as we kind of walk down that path and find ourselves making more and more granular concrete decisions will be very, very valuable. That's the first category. The second thing is, as valuable as all these different things are, I think it's important to differentiate between them. This ECF project, much like, in some sense, our town halls, much like almost any engagement process we do, is not representative, right? In the case of the Community Foundation, it's a lot of grass tops, leaders of organizations, and, you know, kind of the stakeholders that we know and love. Participatory budgeting is really supposed to be representative, right? They're not making recommendations, they're not stakeholders. They are making decisions with binding votes. And as such, you really want to have a carefully curated process in place that has the people in the room making those binding decisions be as representative as possible. And so, these are two different, really valuable things to do. But I just want to be clear about the fact that they are different, both in terms of how you do them, what makes them easier or difficult, what the outcome and value will be. All right, next is Councilmember Fleming, followed by Newsma.
Councilmember Burns reminded me that I did have a project I wanted to suggest if we're, you know, getting to that point. So I know we always talk about affordable housing. We talk about, you know, all of the ways in which we have a hard time as a city making it. But several years ago, Councilmember Rainey, who used to be here, we were talking about affordable housing, and she had a great suggestion that I don't remember all the details too, but essentially it was the City of Evanston Housing Voucher. So as much as we'd like everyone to be able to own a home and everything else, one always say, everybody does not want to own a home, and that's not a requirement. And everyone is not going to be in the place to buy a home, even if we have some kind of great home buying, you know, down payment assistance, whatever, because we have to work through banks and banks have lots of barriers. But nonetheless, she came forward with a program that essentially was like a Section 8 voucher, but it would be run by the City of Evanston. I forgot why at the time we didn't do it. I think it would be a great idea when I do talk to landlords, particularly ones who are even willing to offer affordable housing. They all, not all, but a lot of them get stuck on the process in which they have to go through to participate in the Section 8 voucher program. And then even residents just about trying to get the Section 8 voucher, which I think now is like a four- or five-year wait to get a voucher. So if we, as a city, really want to help with some affordable housing, I think this is an easy way to use not all the $4 million, or we could use a million dollars, make a huge impact. People, landlords and tenants can come here to the City of Evanston, get registered. Landlords would have a little more faith in the program because they could get paid by the city. Our health department or property standards could go out and make sure the units are in good shape. And we can get to people in some affordable housing, stable housing here in our community. And that would be, I think, a very tangible way for people to see us trying to make a huge, or not a huge, but a big effort in affordable housing, which we've talked about forever. And I appreciate that people talk a lot about, you know, workforce development and people being homeowners and all that. But the matter, not the matter of fact, but the fact of the matter is we're not going to get all the affordable housing we need through workforce development and homebuyer programs because everyone's not going to qualify for a bank mortgage. And as Audra Braithwaite mentioned, the price of housing here is probably just going to keep going up. So we need to look at how we keep renters here. And understand that renters are a viable part of our community. Everybody just doesn't have to own. So I would like to throw that out there as something that we can research. I'm happy to call Audra Rainey and get her proposal, which was pretty thorough at the time. proposal, which was pretty thorough at the time, to see if we move forward with a project like that that's tangible and can be implemented pretty soon.
Thank you. Councilmember Nusma.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Picking up on what several of my colleagues have said about the social services bucket not being as big as they would like to see it, I would like to share the observation that in our staff's original proposal to us, the social services bucket constituted about 7% of the total. And the proposal in front of us now, that 4,000 for social services is up to 9%. But let's also consider that the affordable housing bucket, an additional 9%, was not part of the original proposal. So if we're thinking, you know, holistically about social services and including affordable housing in that kind of conceptual category, we have more than doubled what the original staff proposal was. So I think we're definitely heading in the right direction there. Also, want to talk about economic development, and that bucket has increased from the original proposal. And picking up on Councilmember Braithwaite's observation that we can't just hand out fish, but we need to teach people to fish, I think, I'm going to take that one step, one step further and say, not only do we need to teach people to fish, but we need to make sure there is a well-stocked pond. Because we could do the greatest job of teaching people job skills, but if there are no jobs available when they finish the program, we are not solving the problem. And so I look at economic development as a way to finish that process and make sure that there is a thriving economy, a thriving local economy that is there to employ Evanston residents and, you know, generate wealth that stays in our community. So, you know, I am in favor of spending a significant amount of money on economic development, just in general. And to reiterate what I said earlier, you know, I'm in favor of a fewer number of big investments rather than piecemealing that money out. Also want to pick up on something that Councilmember Reed observed and Councilmember Revelle acknowledged as well. Like, we could define CARP as a separate entity that we're putting money in, you know, as long as we spend that money in a way that's appropriate under ARPA. And I would feel better if we did explicitly call out a dollar amount for CARP, that we are taking that seriously, rather than risk, you know, kind of losing track of it in a category, in any number of other categories where it could and, you know, should fit in. You know, I would like CARP to permeate our thinking at every level of decision-making in the City of Evanston, but I would feel more comfortable if we had an explicit amount of money designated for CARP. Thank you.
And finally, Councilmember Reed.
All right, thank you. Just to, again, to, since we're using the fishing and pond analogy, to really hammer in on this and where my viewpoint is, is sure we could go out and buy a few big fish and throw them in a pond and say that we've done something, but I think if we create the conditions that attract fish to that pond in the first place, that's what we need to do. And so I think, again, huge projects, like $2 million, I'll just say it, $2 million to Northlight, to me, does not make sense. That's buying a big fish and, a fish that's already coming and just helping accelerate it. But I think if we really make smart investments, as I said, at our, one of our last meetings, this is, we're spending a lot of time and good on it for the $43 million that we're getting from the federal government, but we have a $300 million budget that we're going to be looking at in about a week. And this is a relatively small amount of money in the grand scheme of things, and we have to be extremely, if we want to make this money have a real impact, extremely smart about how we spend it. And so I just want to keep that in mind and make sure that we're, again, creating conditions that will attract fish and not just purchasing a few fish and throwing them in a pond and saying that we've created a wealth of opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else?
Yep.
I just wanted to-
We're going to go Councilmember Burns, followed by Councilmember Braithwaite.
I just want to second what Councilmember Kelly said about scheduling two or three meetings quickly. You know, we've had a good discussion tonight and probably still have scratched the surface in this discussion, which makes sense, it's just, it's the nature of these type of discussions. But yeah, I think figuring out how, I just wanted to second that. I think we should get two or three of these meetings scheduled pretty quickly, get some feedback from staff based on what we've heard today, and just try to continue to move this forward. And mostly because, again, what I'm really, I really want to know is, at some point, someone is going to have to come up with these projects. And I really want to know, like, is our current staff able to do that based on current staffing levels, or do we need to go out and hire consultants and other people? Like, that's really important to me. So I'd love to get those meetings scheduled, that's all.
If I could just respond, it depends, the answer to that question depends, depends upon what the council wants to do with the money, which is why we need a jumping off point. So for instance, we heard a recurring theme in the Economic Development Committee, and even outside of that, was workforce development. We have to concentrate on workforce development. I have a staff member I can dedicate to workforce development. It's not currently their full-time job, but it's something that they do in part. But that would be one person at half their time dedicated to a huge enterprise. And it depends on how much, again, council wants to invest in that. So are we investing, you know, a million dollars? Are we investing just staff time? Are we investing, are we partnering with other organizations that we could utilize work? I look at workforce development holistically across the city as a whole, across every department, we should be looking at it. We should be looking at it with every partner agency that we have. We should be looking at every opportunity that we have to develop our workforce. Then I turn to what Councilmember Nusma says, and says, well, we got to have enough fish in the pond for people to fish with. And so if we don't have enough businesses on our tax roll, then we don't have enough income coming in, we don't have enough people to go out to that workforce. So it's, we're here tonight, in my mind, because we have to start somewhere. And maybe this isn't perfect, maybe these allocations are not ideal, and maybe we'll adjust that. Maybe we'll come back in a couple of months and say, you know what, we've got five resolutions that council is really in favor of passing, we've got a workforce development team, but I've got, you'll see in a week, there's going to be a stack of memos for this council to review about why we need more staff, and there's going to be data behind that. And it'll be up to this council to say, well, we're not going to fund that because that's going to cost too much, and we'll have to raise taxes in the following year, or, you know, we will fund that because we think ultimately that could bring in more revenue or bring in more social services to the city. So it's hard for me to give you final answers tonight because I think you have to look at this in conjunction with what the budget's going to look like.
And just to be clear too, I think this is fine. In fact, I think we can stop here, and then we're going to projects and then revisit as needed. So I want to be clear. No, I think y'all have done a wonderful job.
Paul Zama's ex waiting over there to start jumping off.
Two minutes, two meetings ago, this was probably fine. I mean, because again, we can always tinker and make adjustments, but let's move to the next phase of working on these projects. And then I had, I wanted to, it'll come back to me, I'm sorry.
All right, Councilmember Braithwaite.
I am also ready to move on. And I just want to clarify something, just in case, you know, I wasn't clear. What I meant by the fish analogy, there's just a real clear message of giving a person a fish versus teaching this person to fish. So just to clarify, on our spending, on our focus, whenever it comes to social services, we can either create and extend a need for dependency, or giving our residents the tools and the knowledge and independence so that they're able to fight for themselves. So that's what I meant by the statement. I think you all knew it, but I heard it thrown around a couple of times, and I just want to make sure I'm being clear to the residents in terms of what I'm advocating for, as well as clear to our staff, the point that I was trying to make. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, that then is, go ahead.
I almost feel like at some of these meetings, and I'm interested to know, Mayor Bis, how you're going to handle this, that we both were having discussion about ARPA, but we also need to take action on ARPA at some meetings. So I don't know how we're going to manage that moving forward, if it'll appear at all the following meetings as for action, and then we'll take action, sorry, on certain parts of it, and then leave, you know, so I just, I'd like some clarification on how we're going to handle that at future meetings.
I'm happy to, sure. I think the general direction tonight is to go forward with these categories in principle. And I say in principle because this could be ever fluid, ever-changing. Then I think staff is at the ready to start really bringing forth proposals and projects, whether that be through the committee level or to council directly, however that's appropriate, if it's appropriate through the committee, if it's appropriate to council directly. They're going to be ready to bring some things forward. I want to be clear, there's still a lot of initiatives that I don't think we're ready to bring forward yet. We need more community input. And we need more council input, quite honestly. But I think there's some projects, we call it the low-hanging fruit, like workforce development, that's been, I've heard that loud and clear across the board. We are ready to get started on those projects. So those are the things I think we start, some of the CARP initiatives, we can, there's a plan in place, we can start moving forward on that as long as it fills one of the buckets. We can start bringing forth resolutions for action through the appropriate committees and as necessary.
Councilmember Reed.
Yeah, I was just going to say exactly where we just ended up, which is that, yeah, it's time to start bringing forth proposals. I think we've had a robust discussion on this. I think the categories are mostly good guideline for us. And so I think really the next step is to start actually putting it into practice and figuring out how we're actually going to use this money in hopefully a manner that creates a real return on investment for us, so.
Great, thank you. I think that's everyone. So I have a few things that I promise I will get through without a single fish metaphor. Starting with the point that was raised initially by Councilmember Kelly and then echoed by others, I think it is smart and appropriate for us to commit to future public discussion on this. I'll tell you, my own view is that this was a far better discussion than ones that we've had before. Of course, significant credit to that goes to staff, who I think were really thoughtful and careful in putting something very valuable in front of us as a jumping off point. But I think part of that did come from the fact that we dedicated an evening to it. I don't want to unilaterally make a commitment on behalf of council and public, so I'll poll people to get a sense of whether the desire is to continue to do these special meetings specifically for this purpose, or if instead people would like to only do that extremely infrequently and usually just have it as an item on our agendas. But I think it's both, I think it makes a lot of sense for us to commit to have a series of ongoing public discussions about this. And I think it is, I would take guidance from staff about whether it's important to memorialize these kind of directions in a resolution, or just kind of let staff move forward and adjust as things move. But I completely agree with everybody up here, the many of you who said it's time to start talking in detail about some of these programs. And, you know, I just, I won't go into this in detail, but I'll just say, you know, some of these categories, like economic development, affordable housing, social services, and inclusive and equitable recovery, these are big, broad, diverse categories that can mean a billion different things. And even when we say workforce development, that itself, I mean, you know, every time Councilmember Burns talks about workforce development, I want to get up and start cheering. But the way he's talking and thinking about this topic isn't just sort of a generic, you know, what any municipality would do if they want to throw together a workforce development effort. There are specific ideas that are kind of swirling around this discussion that I think we need to see what it will take to put those ideas into action. And so I, my views of the next meeting should, or maybe the next series of meetings, should include detailed proposals for individual pieces of this, with the understanding that some of that will be ready sooner than other aspects, and that's appropriate and healthy and good, and just how things will need to be. Just a couple of other quick things that came to me. First of all, just, it's a highly specific point, but I just want to echo my agreement with Councilmember Fleming. I don't think guaranteed income is a social service. Yes, of course, hopefully if the program works well, it exists in lieu of certain social services, but it doesn't quite, never quite sat right with me for it to be in that category. And then finally, I just want to echo the appreciation to the community members who spoke about CARP, who sent us a detailed proposal with a budget. And I think, I think that's going to be a useful tool for us. There are things in what was sent to us that are right in the center of what we're talking about, are one-time expenditures that are related to affordable housing, inclusive and equitable recovery and so forth. There are things that may fit less well, but I think having that document in front of us as we enter into this next step with where we're being more concrete and more detailed will be, will be really, really helpful. So not only want to repeat that appreciation to our environmental partners, but also just say that we're open for business. If community members want to put in that level of time and effort to put together a proposed budget for us, you know, obviously it's not going to be rubber stamped, but it will be taken seriously and incorporated into our thinking. And it's very, very useful to us. So, yeah, I will huddle with everybody to get a sense of staff's sense of a timeframe that's doable on their end and council's preference for how much time to put aside, but we'll be back talking about these issues in public before long. And my commitment is that will be an ongoing thing. It's not going to be, this isn't the last meeting, nor is it the second-to-last meeting. We'll continue to have these conversations in a public way. With that, just again, thanks for everyone. Thank you to council for both prompting this meeting and then being so thoughtful and engaged in it. I think this is clearly the only way we'll be successful in spending this money properly. And thank you to staff for doing really significant work. We're, I feel like we're leaps and bounds ahead of where we were two weeks ago. And that, that's a great thing. It's a great thing, and I'm really appreciative of it. So with that, it's time for call of the wards, beginning with Councilmember Burns.
Before I start, Councilmember Kelly, were we able to make the Planning and Development Housing Subcommittee a virtual, a hybrid meeting?
So-
Are we still working on it?
I spoke with Anderson this evening. It sounds like we can't for the first meeting because it's located in G300, and we, so we don't have virtual for that one. But I have asked that going forward, that we have it in a venue. There's a couple of other rooms. So subsequent meetings, I hope that we will have hybrid capacity.
Are we going to have quorum if it's not virtual? Sorry, this isn't the time necessarily, but-
Yeah, because I'm only asking because I was about to announce it now for the ward, and I, but we could talk about that offline.
I mean, we should. That was the idea, that you now can't go.
We'll talk about it offline, but I would love for it to be relocated so we can have a hybrid. But basically, I wanted to announce the inaugural meeting of the Planning and Development Housing Subcommittee meeting. This is a committee that is formed really as a response to kind of ongoing issues and concerns of residents in Evanston, in particular along kind of the eastern part of the city, and in my ward and in the first ward. And so this is a really important discussion, and I invite the four residents to come out and participate at every moment in this committee, because this is really going to drive a lot of the work forward and address a lot of the issues that we've heard since we've been elected and even prior to. The discussion of interrelated housing policies, so we'll discuss amending the definition of family and change city code pertaining to occupancy of residential units, strengthen the nuisance premise ordinance to more effectively address properties with disruptive residents and foster safe and healthy neighborhoods, review rental licensing as a replacement for rental registration as a tool to maintain the safety and quality of rental housing, consider an increase in fees for property maintenance violations, update landlord/tenant ordinance requirements. This is scheduled for October 6th, 5:00 p.m., 2100 Ridge Room, G300. That is all. Thank you.
Councilmember Revelle.
No report, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Reed.
I'll just announce that I have a ward meeting October 28th. So given quite a bit of notice here, October 28th at 6:00 p.m. Eighth ward meetings will occur on the last Thursday of every month, except for, of course, November and December, where that's not too feasible. That's my only report. Thank you.
Councilmember Fleming. Councilmember Kelly.
Again, I'd just like to reiterate what Councilmember Burns stated about our first meeting of the, convening the first meeting of the Subcommittee of PND this Wednesday at 5:00. And I hope many people will attend from across the city, and especially in the first ward, where we've experienced a lot of issues and problems around, regarding housing and rental and- and other issues. So hope the community comes out to help inform our discussion. Thank you.
Councilmember Braithwaite. Councilmember Wen.
No report, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember-
No report, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Nusma.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a quick announcement, fourth ward meeting tomorrow evening, 7:00 p.m. at Robert Crown. And I would also like to take a minute to talk about the apology announcement that you read. I'd like to thank all my colleagues up here on the dais, all eight of my city council colleagues and the mayor for participating in that project. I think we ended up with a document that might not have reflected our, 100% of each of our individual desires, because they're, in such a difficult and important topic, there's not going to be perfect alignment. But I think by collaborating in the manner that we have, we have come up with a document that is, a statement that is sincere and meaningful and all the more powerful with the unanimous support of the nine members of the city council and the mayor. So thank you, colleagues, for working with me on that. I'd also like to acknowledge some folks that helped along the way. Allison Leipsinger was the first one to, you know, kind of help get the ink flowing and the pen, so Allison, thank you for that. I'd like to also acknowledge some community members who lent their professional expertise so we could, to make sure that our apology had a trauma-informed perspective. So just like to shout out to DeKalb Fonda, Liz Feldman, and Mary Jo Barrett for their assistance in this process. Thank you.
Thank you. And now, seeing no further business to come before us, the October 4th special meeting of the Evanston City Council stands adjourned.